Go ahead and call the May 5, 2025, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. And before we get started, I just want to take a moment of silence for two of our teammates that have passed here recently, very recently. Major Adams, the Chief of the Detention Center, as well as James Geist from, he's the lead consultant or custodian at DSS. So just wanted to take a moment of silence if we could before we get started. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Patel to introduce invocation. Speaker, and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good morning. This one is our Deputy Clerk, or Deputy Clerk from Cyba Clark will lead us in the invocation.
Dear Lord God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity to gather together, and we ask that you will continue to lead and guide us as only you can. We pray, God, for the family members of those that have lost loved ones. We ask, God, that you will comfort them and strengthen them during this time. God, we ask that you would grant wisdom and knowledge as decisions are made for the citizens of this county. We pray that everything be done with peace in mind, and we give you praise and honor. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to the recognitions portion, and we will go ahead and call on the county manager to introduce the finance department.
Yes, Chairman Devi. We have Robin Kuntz, Finance Director, to go over some award, some people from her staff who have received some certifications. And I turn it over to Robin to announce this, present this item and answer any questions you all may have. The recognized staff.
Good morning, Robin.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize these great ladies. I have Jessica Hollander. She is our Finance Accountant Manager, and Sophia Myrnahan, who is our Procurement, Purchasing Manager. And they are both recent recipients of the Certified Local Government Purchasing Officer Certification. This recognizes a broad-based knowledge of all kinds of components of local government purchasing, contracting law, bidding, property disposals, conflicts of interests, and purchasing law. So there's several things you have to do to be able to receive this certification, but some of the more impressive ones to me were you have to be in the profession for a minimum of three years. You have to have completed four core courses with the UNC School of Government, 22 continuing credo education credits, and then successfully complete the exam. So both of these ladies have met those requirements. They were two of the 17 that did in the 2025 class. There were over 30 who went for it, so we were real excited for them about that. They were, Cumberland County's the only local government that has two in this class, so we were very proud of them. And then also Jessica was the recipient of the 2025 Stephen C. Grant Achievement Award because she was the highest scorer on the exam. So I just want to say congratulations and how fortunate we are to have both of these ladies on our team.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Any words from?
No.
We thank you for all you do and what you do for our organization and, more importantly, the people of Cumberland County. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing them forward. It's always good to honor people within our organizations.
Do you want to get a picture of them?
Yeah.
They brought their awards.
Okay, great, great. I'm going to ask Commissioner Patel to come down as the Finance Committee Chair. They're probably tired of hearing from him anyway, so go ahead and get a picture with him. We'll go ahead and move to Item 1, Approval of the Agenda. I'll call on the county manager for any changes to the agenda.
Yes, Chairman Devi. There is one change to the agenda, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Tyson to discuss that item.
I'm going to have him add a motion. Do you have any changes from the county manager?
No from staff.
Okay. I'll go ahead and call on Commissioner Tyson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to make a motion that we add to our Presentations section of our meeting for 5/19/2025, a board proclamation honoring the service of Major Adams, who was our chief jailer at our detention facility. She unexpectedly passed on Friday, and I'd like to ask the board to add that.
Can we go ahead? Would you add in approving the proclamation on the consent agenda today?
Yes, sir. I consider that a friendly number. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Without objection, it's added to today's consent agenda and to the presentation on 5/19, unless any commissioner has an objection. All right. County manager, any other changes?
No other changes, Chairman.
Vice Chairman Jones, I'll call on you for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented, and there's a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to the second, Item 2, Presentations. Cumberland County Stream Gauge Mitigation Project. I'll call on the county manager.
Yes, Gary Crumplum, Interim Emergency Management Director, will present this item and answer any questions you may have about the stream gauges that we use to monitor, especially in storms and hurricanes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chairwoman, yes, Vice Chairwoman. I'm excited today to discuss a project that's been a long time coming here in Cumberland County. We recently installed some stream gauges. That was a collaborative partnership between the county, state agencies, and the Duke So what are stream gauges? Stream gauges are instruments designed to measure water stages on rivers and other tributaries here in Cumberland County and statewide. The gauges monitor the height, and in some cases, the stream flow to provide essential data. So we use these stream gauges to help predict evacuation areas in case of inland flooding during hurricanes or tornadoes or anything that may bring a large amount of water to our community. So in the early 2000s, the NC Fiman Network was established, which is a system of stream gauges designed to help first responders, emergency management personnel determine evacuation areas, warning areas, and to help forecast potential recovery efforts that will be needed. As many of you know, during hurricanes, Matthew and Florence, we had less than 24 hours notice of evacuation, the evacuation need, especially in the town of Spring Lake. So through those incidents, it was identified that the county needed additional stream gauges to help expand our monitoring and warning capabilities. So a trip down memory lane, you can see US Highway 13 at the Sampson County line was pretty much underwater. Carver's Creek, which is near Spring Lake, also underwater. And then many of you that live in the Hope Mills community remember Lake Upchurch Dam, the breach there and the major flooding that it caused in the Hope Mills area. After Hurricane Matthew especially, the Hurricane Resiliency Plan was developed, and in that document, it identified the need for more stream gauges, as well as the Cumberland-Hope Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan also as well. So through initiative, through the state, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency started a program called the Rise: Regional Innovations for Strong Economies and Environments. And the objective was to, at a regional approach, gather counties together to talk about mitigation strategies and how we can make our communities more resilient. So proud to say our emergency management team, our county management team, also participated in those meetings and throughout projects that they thought would make our community more resilient, and one of those were stream gauges. So after the portfolio was designed and completed, the Accelerator Grant Program, which was an initiative by the Duke Energy Foundation, was put forth, and that initiative fully funded potential projects within the identified portfolio. And after submitting a competitive application, the Cumberland County Stream Gauge Project was selected. We were awarded $27,650 to install six stream gauges. I've highlighted six because due to the COVID-19 pandemic and supply chain issues, the cost rose exponentially, and we were only able to purchase five instead of the six, which was allowed by the grant. Those are some icons that identify where the stream gauges were installed. Little Rockfish Creek, again near Spring Lake, Black Bridge Road near Hope Mills, just downstream from Lake Upchurch, Jumper Run Creek in Spring Lake, and Linden, and right at the Sampson-Cumberland County line as shown in those pictures. So you probably passed stream gauges a million times and never noticed what they are. These are a few pictures from the Lake Williams Stream Gauge, and identified by the icon on the map, most of our water in Cumberland County starts up north and travels down south towards New Hanover County and those areas. This is a picture of the one installed at Sampson County line, the one at Blacks Bridge Road downstream from Lake Upchurch, McCormick Bridge. So I'll call your attention, so with the installation of stream gauges, sometimes there's some inherent risks. This one, a couple weeks or a couple days after, before I made this presentation, we did some inspections and noticed that somebody had vandalized one of our stream gauges. So you can see the solar panel was removed and the wires were cut. So I just call citizens' attention to, you know, these stream gauges are there to help you, and if you see any vandalism, please report it to the Emergency Management Office. Here's the one at Linden. And so where does all this data go? It goes into the NC Fiman Network, which is a publicly accessible network, and you can put in any location, it'll bring in, bring up the next closest stream gauge in proximity to your location. You can also use this platform to set alerts, so whenever there's moderate flood stages, I know Commissioner Adams, on numerous occasions, has sent, you know, what's going on with Lake William or the lock down in Bladen County? What's the impact? So these are the tools that we use to answer those questions. So most people think of emergency management only during times of disasters, so I think this project highlights that your emergency management team is working hard towards the resiliency of Cumberland County, and we continue to build stronger private, state, and community relationships. Do I have any questions about the presentation?
Commissioners, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions if you have any or comments. All right. Okay, we appreciate what you do. We appreciate this project. For those of us, and I think everybody on this dais and a lot in the audience were there during those, some of the disasters, especially down in Spring Lake and some of the other areas, and Hope Mills as well. So we appreciate the effort. We need to continue to push, look for state resources that can augment what we're doing, as well as federal resources. We know disaster recovery is on the forefront of what they're talking about at the state level right now, and we need to make sure they don't forget that eastern North Carolina has as many issues as western North Carolina. So we appreciate what you do and the effort that you put on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I could get a commissioner to help me to present a certificate of appreciation to the NCOR office.
Sure. I will ask Commissioner Tyson to come down as the fire and sheriff liaison, emergency
So this certificate reads, "Thank you for your continued service to Cumberland County community. Your support of local mitigation projects in Cumberland County helps ensure our community is better prepared to face potential hazards that may impact our area. We truly appreciate your efforts and investment in our community." So this is presented to Andrea Webster and the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency.
And I'll also add in, let's not, also not forget, the people that are still, less than probably 300 or 200 now, they're still trying to get back into their homes through the programs with NCOR that I know that I watched when I was up in the state senate. So let's make sure we stay focused on them and not lose, let people like fall through the cracks. So we appreciate what you do. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to Item 3, Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Commissioner Patel?
Yes, if we could just pull Item E1.
To move to new business?
Yes.
Commissioners, any other changes? Hearing none, Vice Chairwoman Jones would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion to approve the consent agenda as modified with the removal of Item E1. Move to item of business. It's been properly seconded. I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you. And at this time, I want to go ahead and if I can ask the economic development team to come forward. I'm going to come down with you, and I'm going to ask Vice Chairwoman to read the proclamation.
Whereas May 12 through the 16th, 2025, has been designated as Economic Development Week, and whereas the economic development profession cultivates striving neighborhoods, champions, sustainable, and resilience, boosts economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life, and builds a robust tax base, and whereas economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, and also national governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, institutions of high education, among many similar organizations and associations, and whereas the county's Community Development Department and Fayetteville-Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation are committed to bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancement, and optimistic future. And whereas economic development contributes to the betterment and progress of Cumberland County by fostering growth, prosperity through equity, inclusion, sustainable resilience, and innovation, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Cumberland County proclaims the week of 12, the 12th through the 16th of May, 2025, as Economic Development Week in Cumberland County, and we urge, and it urges its citizens to salute the professionals located in our area for their important role in the growth and prosperity of Cumberland County, adapted this 5th day of May, 2025, signed by the Chairman Kirk Deviara, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners.
And thank you, Robert, for all you and your team do, not just in this, when we're showcasing you during Economic Development Week, but the impact you've made on this community and the time that you've been here and the work that you've done impacts every citizen across our community because you're raising the income levels and you're doing the work that needs to be done to grow our community. So we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and this wouldn't be possible without the support of the entire of the county commissioners today and in the past in the city of Fayetteville. But as Commissioner Adams likes to say, many of our projects happened in Fayetteville, but all of our projects happen in Cumberland County. So thank you so much for all you do to make it successful.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
No, no, thank y'all very much. We have much to do.
We're going to do the next one.
We're going to do these later.
We'll go ahead and move to Item 4, Items of Business. Item A, Consideration of Amendment of Sales Tax Distribution Interlocal Agreement. Call in County Manager Greer.
Yes, this is a modification of our sales tax agreement with the municipalities. Rick Morfield, County Attorney, will present this item and answer any questions you have. And also Ty Valt, Chief of Staff, will assist if anything, any other additional questions you all have with this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Board members, this is, hopefully, I'm sure it will be the last one of these agreements that started in 2003, so this has been in place for over two decades. But this is an amendment to the agreement that was entered into in 2003. What it does is reduce, if you recall, the last amendment we did made any increase in the sales tax over the fiscal year '22 amount, 100% of that increase would go to the county. This changes that to make it only 50% to the county and 50% to be divided among the, all the municipalities. That's only for this fiscal year. For fiscal year '24, the agreement remains the same, so it's just for this one year. It also does that for any decline, and we won't really know about either of these until the end of the fiscal year, until they have collections. And this has been signed by all but, well, three of the smaller towns. It's my understanding that they are all going to sign it, and one has, I think Linden has to do a special meeting. But what I'm proposing is that once we get the final three extended secure pages, I will place it on the consent agenda of the meeting after that as a line of information to create a permanent record. You won't have to reconsider it.
Attorney Morfield, just to be clear, I thought there was one, Linden was one that hadn't, that they were having, they were having a meeting to sign it, and I believe all the other ones had signed it. Maybe Falcon had an issue with the signature, but all the other ones had signed.
We just hadn't received Falcon and Godwin back yet as of?
Godwin you received.
Oh, we did, okay.
You received Godwin.
We didn't get it before.
Okay. So we've spoken to the mayor of Linden through the clerk and through email, said they're supportive of it. Falcon just had approved it. They had an issue with the signature, so they're redoing that.
And, Ms. Jones, also, there are no contingencies on this now. The amount that was set out in there that was owed by the city has been paid for.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I got mine.
I see Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I will tell you, I'm not in agreement with this. This has gone on since 2003, has always been in the benefit of these municipalities. We stopped a multimillion-dollar project over $1.8 million, and today we're going to give away $4 million. It makes no sense to me at all to be able to do that. This is an agreement that they all, we went back and forth. I've done a number of these. I think Marshall's done some, Commissioner Council, and it was a fair agreement to the county, and so I just don't think we should amend this even for the one year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate your comments, Commissioner Adams. Just to add some additional color to this, there's some discussions and concern about the previous agreement that was in place before I took office as a chair, as far as the formulas and some other things. So this was a compromise that we felt was in the best interest of our municipalities going into the final year of this agreement. It enables our smaller municipalities to have some resources back from their tax, from the sales tax revenue. This board gave direction to the staff to work with the municipalities. The municipalities have been supportive of it, and this board has been supportive in the direction of negotiating it. So I just wanted to make sure we painted the entire picture. And at this time, I will go ahead and entertain a motion from Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Motion to approve the amendment to the Sales Tax Distribution Interlock Agreement and authorize the chairman to sign it all at once. All the municipalities have signed an approval at this time.
Second. There's a motion on the floor to approve the amendment to the sales distribution, Sales Tax Distribution Interlocal Agreement and authorize the chairman to sign it once all municipalities have finalized it, have signed it. It's properly seconded. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for your votes. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman Deviara, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Fairclough. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Board. We will go ahead and move forward to Item B, that was added to the Items of Business, Approval of the Employee Health Center Provider. I'll call on County Manager Greer to talk about this item, and then we'll have the question from Commissioner Patel as well.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Back in April, we presented our conclusions, recommendations for the Employee Healthcare Center Provider, and we stand with the current, we recommend standing with this current provider, Proactive MD. Robin Kuntz will go over this item, and Finance Director present this item and answer any questions you may have. The renewal is for three years, and we felt like bringing it forward because one-year clause prohibitive. I think the one thing we could add, if the Board's pleasure, is add a one-year termination clause in there, but we will have to work through that with the attorney and USI. Turn it over to Robin.
Good morning.
Good morning again.
Thank you. So where we left this last time, the recommendation was a three-year contract with our current provider, Proactive MD. The cost for that was going to be $1,254,975. That was going to be an increase of $470,922 over our 2025 contract. The reason for the increase is mostly because there was some expansion in personnel. We added, the model that was proposed and that was recommended was two nurse practitioners, two licensed practical nurses, and an office manager. But I will, you know, y'all had some follow-up questions for me that last time we discussed, and I've emailed those responses to everyone, so if you have any additional questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them at this time.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I understand, you know, this is a big part of our organization from a county perspective. I just wanted to know, just for clarification, information purposes, I know there was a question on the cost of adding a physician, an MD or DO, that I don't know if the whole board, if we received the information on that. And then, secondly, if we did have a cost of potentially knowing what termination of the agreement.
Sure. That information I've had, and I'll be glad to go over it with everybody. So if you look at the model right now and you stick with the three-year, but you replace one of the nurse practitioners with a medical doctor, that would increase the cost. They're estimating to, it was, right now, our cost is $1,254,975, and the increase would be to $1,395, a little bit over $140,000 for a medical doctor. That's if we stayed with a three-year contract. If we were to decide to go into a shorter-term contract for just a year, if we kept it at the recommended staffing model with just the nurse practitioners and not an MD, then the one-year contract would be $1,634,100. And so that's an increase of $379,125. And if you replace the nurse practitioner with an MD, the increase would be $558,525. There is normally not a termination. There is normally not a termination penalty from what the provider has, has explained. They do not offer a termination for convenience clause. So, they said that we would be responsible for the entire three-year fee if we decided to terminate early.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson, or Patel, do you have a follow-up?
I just have one follow-up. So, the, just to clarify, if we add it with the current three-year contract, if we substituted a doctor in for a nurse practitioner, would look at an increase of $140,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
$140,025.
And then the one-year contract with current, with the current staffing model would be about $80,000 roughly increase?
No, if we did a, if we changed to a one-year contract, that's really when the cost significantly goes up. If it's a one-year contract and we do not have a medical doctor, the cost would be $1,634,100. If we did a one-year contract and we did add a medical doctor, the cost would be $1,813,500. Sure.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the concerns that I have is, and, and the board has received some, some feedback about some concerns by email that some of the, the folks that use this facility have relating to the removal of walk-in availability appointments, kind of the ability to get an appointment. And so, you know, I guess my question to you is, if we sign this three-year agreement, what, what assurance do we have that our, our quality of care for our employees, which is a, one of our biggest resources we have here? What, what assurance do we have that we're going to maintain a high standard of quality? And if we don't, do we have a mechanism to make a change there?
We'll have that in the contract. So, I think one who's experienced that in the past with this provider, and we've quickly got it rectified. And I think they understand moving forward with this contract that that will not be allowed. And then the expectation will be that you have enough staff to not only walk-ins, but also appointments also.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, just to, to make it really clear, if for some reason the quality of care is not to the level that this, of this board's satisfaction, we would have the ability to, to terminate this agreement early without penalty?
We will make sure that we put that in the contract. And I will be bringing that to you before you even got some emails about that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager.
Commissioners, any other questions? I would, Commissioner Patel?
Can we, when we look at the termination clause, can we look and see if we can find a one-year contract in that? And what that cost would be?
I'll talk with County Attorney, but we'll, we'll work through that.
So, Commissioner Patel, you want to, you want to make a motion around this, or do we want to bring it back?
I would like to bring it back.
Okay. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, in the spirit of Commissioner Patel's comments, and I share some of the concerns he has, would, would we have a mechanism where we could do an annual review of this? And, and put that mechanism in place as opposed to just a one-year agreement? To where we can review it annually and, and have a discussion as a board about it?
Well, we, we meet with them at least once a quarter. But yes, we could put that metric in there and have a annual review. I, I think that based on the, the nature of this contract and some of the things, some of the complaints and concerns of employees that we've had in the past, I think it would only be prudent if we had an annual review.
Commissioner Tyson, anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yes, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ken, go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
I, I move that we award a three-year contract to Proactive MD at annual cost of $1,254,975,000 with a staffing level to include two full-time nurse practitioners, two full-time licensed practical nurses, and one full-time office manager to include the recommendations from Commissioner Tyson and Commissioner Patel as to determination on that.
Is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Robin, do we have, if this is moved to the 19th meeting, does that still give enough time for this contract?
I, I think we're okay. We're, we're getting ready to roll into open enrollment soon. And if we don't, if we're not changing, if we were changing providers, it would be a huge, we'd have already been too late. But if we were to decide to add an MD to this contract, they did give us the warning that it would take maybe three or four months to locate that person. So, we would obviously not be starting off July 1 with that in place.
But if we, excuse me, if we wanted to work through the details that were discussed, see those parameters come back at the 19th, it shouldn't slow anything down.
We'll, we'll keep it moving.
Okay. Commissioner Patel, entertain a motion.
So, I'll make a motion to look at if we can review those, have them added to this, this agenda item brought back on May 19 to the spirit of what Commissioner Adams has included.
Second. Got a motion on the floor to bring this back based on the, the questions around this back on the 19th May meeting. And it's been properly seconded. Are there any discussions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in affirmative.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Robin, and thank you. I, I know we've worked through this in a lot of different ways. We appreciate all the information you provided us. We just want to make sure we are, you know, protecting the best interest of this community in this, in this contract as well. So, thank you so much. Thank you, County Manager, for your work on this as well. We'll go ahead and move to item five nominations. There are no nominations for this meeting. We'll go ahead and move to the appointment section. At this time, we have, one, two, three, four. We have six different boards that we're going to vote on this morning. Just want to remind everybody for the listening audience, as well as those watching, that we will walk through each one of these boards based on the amount of vacancies. Each person would need, each vacancy would need to receive a majority of the votes for each one of the items. So, for example, if there's two vacancies and there's four people, we'll go through each one of the names. We'll cast our votes for those individuals. And then based on the ones that have majority, if we have more than, if, in that example, if we only had one person of the four that got majority of the votes, we would, we would move them out. We'd look at the other individuals that may have been in a tie, and we'll move them forward and bring them back for, for a vote again. Commissioners, any questions on the process? I know most of you have gone through it before. At this time, I'll go ahead and call on Vice Chairwoman Jones to bring forward the appointments.
I will be starting with the ABC Board. There are two vacancies. I will state the names first as how many people we have, and then I'll go back individually for your vote. Who we have that have been considered, again, there are two vacancies, and the following individuals are being considered. Terry Thomas, Alfred Foot, Jamal George, Wade Fuller, and Viveka Taiton.
Viva.
Viveka, I'm sorry about that, Taiton. And now, at this time, I will start with Terry Thomas to see who wants to vote for Terry Thomas. Raise your right hand. Next on the list, votes for Alfred, or Afred, I want to pronounce it correctly, Foot. Please raise your right hand. Next on the list is Jamal George. Those that want to vote for Jamal George, please raise your right hand. Wade Fuller, those that want to vote for him, raise your right hand. And then the last name for votes is Vivek Taiton. This time, I'd ask for the clerk to state the vote count so that we will then move forward with the two appointments that receive the most votes.
Terry Thomas with five votes, Alfred Foot, zero votes, Jamal George, two votes, Wade Fowler with five votes, and Vivek Taiton, zero votes.
I make a motion to appoint the two top with the most votes, Terry Thomas with five votes and Wade Fuller with five votes to the ABC Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
There's a motion to appoint Terry Thomas and Wade Fowler to the ABC Board. It's been properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor?
Can we do that?
I'm just trying to figure out why we would do that when they, whoever got the highest votes, because they've already, it's an appointment, it's not.
There's no tie or anything.
Okay. All right, there's no tie. Go ahead.
Next, we will move on to the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees.
And Madam Vice Chair, before you move to Cape Fear Valley Hospital Board, we received word from Ms. Hamilton that she'd asked to have her name removed. I know there's a process for that, but just be aware of that as you're voting, that she's asked to be removed from the process. So, we really have one person with Shannon Matthews for the registered nurse. We'll give Ms. Counsel just a second to get seated. We'll go ahead and stand at recess for a second while we get Ms. Counsel settled. Okay, we'll go ahead and move out of recess and move forward, make sure Ms. Counsel is settled.
I've been birthing kittens.
Oh, birthing kittens.
All right. We will go ahead. We're on appointments, Ms. Counsel and Commissioner Counsel. And we are moving towards the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees. Vice Chairwoman Jones, if you'll continue.
For the nurses' position, there's one nurses' vacancy for nurses. And the following name is Shannon Matthews. All those that would like, she's the only name on this list at this time. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And now, we will go on to, we have two general public representatives. There are two vacancies. Each commissioner will receive two votes. I will, I will list the five names, and then I will ask for individual vote. For consideration, we have Dr. Sanjay Shae, Dr. Rashad Gupta, Dr. Tony Stewart, Jimmy, Jimmy Keith, and Alexandra, Alexandra Keith. All those that would like to vote for Dr. Shae, Sanjay Shae, please raise your. Shaw, I'm sorry, raise your right hand. All those that would like to vote for Dr. Rashad Gupta, raise your right hand. All those that would like to vote for Tony Stewart, raise your right hand. All those that would like to vote for Jimmy Keith, raise your right hand. And Alexandra Keith, raise your right hand. Have the clerk at this time, Ms. Andrea Taffey, to please tally those votes and give us the names of who has the highest votes, please.
For Dr. Shaw, we have seven votes. For Dr. Gupta, we have three votes. For Dr. Stewart, we have one vote. For Jimmy Keith, we have two votes. And for Mr. Keith, we have zero votes.
I think, yeah, two for Stewart, I think Commissioner Counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was two.
Commissioner Adams.
Sorry, I apologize.
Commissioner Adams, you got a comment?
No, I was just telling the, correct on the votes.
Please direct to the chair.
So, our top votes, we have Dr. Shaw with seven and Dr. Gupta with three.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Dr. Shaw with seven and Dr. Gupta with three.
I make a motion to appoint Dr. Shaw, I'm sorry, I make a motion to appoint Shannon Matthews as a registered nurse physician, Dr. Shaw, and also Dr. Gupta as the general public positions for the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees at this time. As they were the highest votes with seven and three, and unanimous with Shannon Matthews. And now, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman.
It has to be, we have to move to four, correct? That's okay. So, we would take a vote on Dr. Gupta, former Commissioner Keith, and former Commissioner Stewart, correct?
Well, under the process that you laid out, I think it was just who got the most votes.
So, it was seven, three, then two and two. So, there's Dr. Gupta and Dr. Shaw were the top three.
Do they need to have a majority? No?
Not the way you did it, no, no, sir.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and move forward.
Is that correct on that?
The attorney said it's correct. Let's go ahead.
You, you can do it the, the other way, but this is the way you lay these rules out. Is that the way it came out of the Policy Committee, Mr. Chairman?
Out of the Policy Committee. And we need to verify that, but my understanding is it's the top vote getters, is how it was outlined in the policy.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to be confused.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move to the Civic Center Commission.
I'm sorry, can I just get clarification? We'll just.
So, the top two vote getters, Dr. Shaw, Dr. Gupta from the general public, and Shannon Matthews by acclamation. So, it's the top two vote getters. They don't have to have a majority. It's the top two vote getters from the count.
Okay, that's one I want to get clarification.
And Ms. Jones, just clarifying, I, I'm just not familiar enough with the new rules of policy that the Boards and Commissions Committee did, so, but.
Do we need to, Mr. Attorney, do we need to take a pause and let you review that to make sure we're accurate?
I would feel more.
Okay, let's, let's take a quick, let's take quick recess while you review that. Well, no, I don't want to vote on anything, so, in case we have an issue or we have to go back. We can go ahead, let's go ahead and move forward, and if we need to move back, if somebody doesn't have a, a majority of the votes, then we'll move back and, and cast those votes. Let's go ahead and move forward in, in the essence of time to the Civic Center Commission. If you'll please review that. Attorney Morfield.
Civic Center, there are four vacancies. Each commissioner will receive four votes. I will say all those that are being considered, and then we will go individually for a vote for each commissioner. Alexandra Keith, Manish. Mata, Lee Spurrel, Chloe Tyler, Lindora Thompson, Elizabeth Stiff, and Alan Rogers. At this time, individually, we'll ask for each individual's vote. Alexandra Keith, all those that would like Alexandra Keith, please raise your right hand. Manish Mata, please raise your right hand. Lee Spurrel, please raise your right hand.
Just one second. Keep them up for a moment, please.
We do get four votes, correct?
Correct.
Chloe Tyler, please raise your right hand. Lindora Thompson, please raise your right hand. Elizabeth Stiff, please raise your right hand.
What did I? Commissioner Counsel, were you voting? Were you voting for Ms.? Were you voting for Miss Stiff?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I fail. I hit my head.
Go ahead.
Alan Rogers, please raise your right hand.
Rogers.
So, with Alexandra Keith, he has two votes, Mr. Metta has three, Lee Spurle has five, Chloe Taylor has five, Lindora Thompson has three, Elizabeth Stiff has two, and Alan We have three with five votes, but two that are tied at three votes. Lindora Thompson and Mr. Metta are tied at three votes each.
Okay. So, we will go back through those two to, to break that tie, so, Vice Chairwoman, if we could go back through Mr. Metta and Ms. Thomas.
All those in favor of Mr. Metta, raise your right hand. All those in favor of Ms. Thompson, raise your right hand.
So, that's Ms. Thompson at five votes.
Okay.
That's our top five. Our top four is Lee Spurle, Chloe Taylor, Alan Rogers, and Lindora Thompson.
Can you say that one more time, please?
Lee Spurle, Chloe Taylor, Alan Rogers, and Lindora Thompson.
I make a motion to appoint Lee Spurle, Chloe Taylor, Alan Rogers, and Lindora Thompson for appointment to the Civic Center Commission at this time, please.
All right, we'll go ahead and move forward to the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation.
Are we not doing D?
Oh, you have D. Correction, back up.
I'm sorry.
Equalization and Review Board appointment.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Chairwoman.
Okay. Appointing officers, fourth commission responsible appointment of the chairman, vice chairman, second vice chairman, equalization, review. So, we are looking to appoint Chairman George Turner, first vice chair, William Holland, and second vice chair, Rodney Sherrill.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
They've already been appointed. It's just about, yeah, exactly.
It'll be the officer.
Yep. All right, Vice Chairwoman, will continue with item A.
Fayetteville Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation has two vacancies. We have two vacancies at this time. We have four individuals. I will list their names. Christine Allen, Brian Car, I think it's Crackover, Jonathan, there's two Jonathans, Jonathan Profit and Jonathan Charleston. I'll read the names for all of us that want Christine Allen, please raise your right Christine Allen. And then we have Brian, again, I don't want to pronounce his name wrong.
Crakeover.
And then we have two different Jonathans, Jonathan Profit, and then we have Jonathan Charleston.
Which one are we doing?
Jonathan Profit first, P-R-O-F-I-T-T-E, and then we have Jonathan Charleston at last. And that's it.
Okay. So, we have three, four votes for Christie Allen, and the other three, Brian Crackover, Jonathan Profit, and Jonathan Charleston are all tied at two.
He had three. Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We can, we can walk through the votes again, if we need to.
So, for Christie Allen, I have Commissioner Tyson, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. For Brian Crackover, I have Chairman DeVeere and Commissioner Patel.
Correction, Madam Clerk, I voted for Brian Crackover as well.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I did not see that, okay. And that changes it to Christie Allen with four votes, and Brian Crackover with three, and then Jonathan Profit had one vote, Commissioner Faircloth, and who all voted for Jonathan Charleston, I want to verify. Okay. And that gives Mr. Charleston three votes as well, so we have three people tied at three votes.
Two people tied at three votes.
No, Crackover. We have Brian Crackover, Chris, yes, I apologize, yes, three votes, with Brian Crackover and Jonathan Charleston.
We need to go ahead and...
So, we have to revote then?
Correct. Mr. Crakeover and Mr. Charleston.
I have still birthing kittens.
We're doing a tiebreaker between Mr. Brian Crackover and Jonathan Charleston. Is that correct?
Yes.
Am I saying that right? So, all those in favor for Mr. Brian Crackover, raise your right hand. All those in favor of Jonathan Charleston, raise your right hand.
Okay, that gives Christie Allen and Brian Crackover four votes each.
I make a motion to appoint Brian Crackover and Christine Allen to the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Tourism Development Board.
Madam Vice Chair, you already made that, you don't have to make another motion because you vote, you have both of those appointed with a majority vote.
No, there's only one vacancy for TDA.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then you don't have, sorry.
Please proceed, Vice Chairwoman.
Hotels and motels over 100 rooms representative. We have two individuals, Manish Metta, and also Michelle Williams. I'd ask for your vote at this time. All those in favor of Manish Metta, please raise your right hand.
Okay.
All those in favor of Michelle Williams, please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Four votes for Michelle Williams.
I make a motion to appoint Michelle Williams to the Tourism Development Board.
Are there any other items for appointments? Madam Clerk, is there anything we missed?
No.
Mr. Attorney, are we able to clarify the vote as I, as I understand it?
And, Mr. Chairman...
If not, we're going to have to revote all these on the 19th.
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, my computer has crashed, I cannot access the file.
If you'll go back and just let us know after this meeting, and if we need to, Madam Clerk, we will reverse this and, and vote accordingly at the 19th meeting. Any other questions on the appointments? None, I'll move to item seven, closed session, and I'll ask Vice Chairwoman Jones for a motion.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to add one, I also need to add paragraph number four, economic development.
Thank you.
Calling Vice Chairwoman Jones for a motion.
A motion to move, I make a motion to move into closed session for attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3, and also, we would like to add in economic development, which is NCGS 143-318.1184, for client and attorney privilege for closed session at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to go into closed session. I'd ask for your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion from Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, motion to come out of closed session for attorney-client matters pursuant to NCS, NCGS 143-318.11A3, and also, NCGS 143-318.11A4.
Second. Motion to come out of closed session, been properly seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And I'll go ahead and, and we'll move to adjourn. Vice Chairwoman Jones, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're adjourned.